This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, guys. Dear the Father, I thank you for staying. I thank you for this opportunity that we have to be here today. And I pledge your praises to you, and I pray that you please just come to our Father. I pledge your praises to our Father, and to our people. God, the past Lord, and the present Jesus. We are here for this meeting today, and I pray that you please just be prepared. As soon as you're ready, I'll go ahead and see if you can get this going. Listen, I say, 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 I say,
Sorry, yes, Mayor, we do have one person who'd like to speak, but we're going to change out, we're having an issue with that microphone. Mrs. DeGarmo, would you like to come up? And we'll have you use the microphone that's here at my desk.
Mic check.
My name is Donna DeGarmo. I live in Plum Point, here in Rome. And obviously, I'm here to talk about the police department today, so hence, I get to sit down, have my own microphone and everything. So anyhow, I wanted to be able to talk about the police academy. I was fortunate to be able to be involved in the first one, as you can see in my shirt. And I asked for Officer Garrett to be here because he apparently was the one that is the force in getting it into Rome, and is just the most amazing program. When I saw it on Facebook, and that's where they have advertised, I don't know about anybody, any place else, but I put my name in, and I never thought for one minute I would be called, because I might be a little bit older than what I thought that they were looking for, but they called me, I got to be in. And this program was just super amazing, from the first class. The first class, Chief DeBis stood up, and he gave us a bio on all of the officers in our police department. And that alone, I mean, people, you need to come just to hear that. We have got, I think, one of the most educated, accredited police force that I've ever heard of, certainly better than a whole lot I know of that are not in the Rome district. And I mean, they are just, he introduced every one of them, so we got, they might not have all been there in person that night, but we got to know of them, know their credentials. It was great. And then we went on, I mean, our classes went on, and we were able to, with Garrett's direction, we learned about traffic stops, and what they went through to do traffic stops, domestic problems, what they go through with that, I mean, DWI. And I was going to say, I'm not going to spoil all the fun, but the DWIs is a good class, I mean, I would recommend that to anybody. And I have to say, I could not walk a straight line, and I had not even one beer, nothing. So anyhow, I just, you know, the class involved not only Officer Garrett, but as the nights went on, and the classes went on, Sid was there, and Chief was there, and all the way to the point where we were shooting guns, and I got a chance to meet our brand-new officer, Danny. I mean, so, you know, and Rex, I mean, Rex was there with every class to help things along. And there's just not one thing I could say, other than this is a most phenomenal program. And if anybody's listening out there, I know they're advertising it again, and I would recommend it to anyone that, you know, to, just to see what, to see what they do, you would be so amazed. They not only, you know, they're not only out there for traffic stops, but they're there for the neighborhood kids. They were teaching us tricks about our house, how to protect ourselves, you know, to avoid break-ins. I mean, the class was just, you know, non-stop informational. And anyhow, I have to say that one of our classmates, obviously, was taking the cookies all the time. And I heard so much about the cookies, I mean, Rex especially loved the cookies. Well, you guys, you would not want me to make you cookies. I mean, that's just bottom line, that's it. So, I was trying to think of a way to thank you myself, and normally, my instinct was, I would get them a bottle, okay? So, I'm pretty sure Chief would found a bun that, Amanda also, and the whole bunch of them, but same color as, well, by the way, which I kept, sorry. One thing I know you guys like to do is eat. And so, I don't know how to match it, so, but anyhow, as my thank you, and I'm sure the rest of the class would like to thank you, these are for at least a lunch, and whatever, I hope, I'm giving them all to you, and I hope you share them. If not, I will know. And to begin with, you have to share one, because part of our class was learning about the fire department, and EMTs, and their job. And I got to sit in the front seat of the fire truck, and they said, "See those pedals down there? If you hit them, they'll make the sirens go." Duh, it does. But anyhow, the class was not only serious, it was informative, it was a great honor to be able to be with these guys, and to learn from them. And I have been waiting to do this for a long time, because we had their elections and stuff like that, so it took a while. But I want to thank you so, so much. Thank you for getting it started, thank everybody else for being involved. It was amazing. And I promised my neighbor I would be home before dark, because they said, "No, no, she can't say just a few words," which I, it's hard. So I'm going to go back and sit down, and just say that, you know, I think we have one of the most professional, I mean, not that I know a lot of, but, I mean, there was just nothing about our classes or our nights that just weren't, you know, quite unprofessional, and we had fun, knowledgeable, I just, I was going to say, I think I need to give you a hug. I always want something to give me a hug.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other?
No, sir.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. All these items are recommended for approval by the consent agenda. These are of a routine nature, require only brief deliberation by council. Would one of you like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Hi.
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 Thank you, Mayor. This item was before planning and zoning at a previous meeting, and was sent to council with their recommendation for approval. This requires, or this request is for two variances on the new Prairie View Elementary School Site. One of them would be to allow the light sources to exceed our current regulations, which are 15 feet maximum height. They would like to try and keep the light poles at the 25 feet height that the current parking lot area and site has approved. Approval for, they'd also have a variance request to increase the standards of our building code as it relates to the requirements for tornado shelters. Our building codes are older, and we need to get those updated quickly, very quickly. And so they have asked for that variance, which is, of course, most definitely, it's a requirement of schools, but it's certainly in the best interest of the children that are going to be on campus. We do have Mr. Varghese who is here, but I don't know if anyone wants to speak on the public hearing portion.
At this time, it is 6:12, the public hearing is open. Nothing hurt? At this time, we will close the public hearing, the public comment. Moving to the regular agenda, take action on this variance request, just we just spoke about, is there any discussion with council?
What is this height going to do to the people that live in the neighborhood?
The height of the lights? So let's have Mr. Varghese come to the microphone, please, and he can explain that a little bit better.
All right, I'm with Tignall Perkins, representing Northwest ISD. The lights are 25-foot high, a lot of it are not facing the residential side of the facility, so most of it is made for the parking lots.
Where exactly are these light poles going in?
Sure, I have a timeline right here, I can compare with you guys.
If you all wouldn't mind, so that we could potentially capture some of this, speak right into the microphones, Mayor, if you could share yours with Mr. Varghese, that would be great.
So none of this is actually going to be on, what about dentists?
And one of the things we talked about at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was a shielding of said lights, so that the light wouldn't escape the property. That's something that he could speak to as well.
Right on the other side of the church, at the house.
This one would be, you know, right into the backyard, but the church, which, well, church is right next to the house, but, well, there's a parking lot, so it goes up and you want them to be up straight back. There's options, we could just plug here.
I would be more of, based in fact, right. What about this? Let's say, it's all of these churches here, there are houses, but for me, if you guys move them all over the face, and like, yeah. So, one, two, three, three lights, and you'd be switching, and probably, yeah. And the variance is that for these lights specific, so if you guys wanted to put more in, basically come back and talk to me, that's right.
I mean, the lights that are, again, there's light, parking lot, that's required, I know, the variance is for the height.
Not the number, per se.
Yeah.
So, for those who are online, the questions come up, the engineering firm is working with council, and they've also worked with P&amp;Z to try and ensure that the light pollution doesn't spill over to the homes that are surrounding the new school site, since this current school site's going to be considerably closer to the homes in that neighborhood. So, one of the things that they've been discussing is turning the lights in towards the parking lot, so that they don't shed any light towards the back where the homes are, and most of those would be pointing towards the church that's in that particular area.
Are these going to be on a timer? And are they going to be stored, or just straight out? They're standard streetlights? Sure. They're standard, they're standard streetlights, and they're going to be LED lights, so they're going to be on a photo cell, it's going to be your standard brightness.
This one right here, are you guys going to, can you guys shield this one where the light isn't going to be affecting any of the houses over here?
There's really not much you can do shielding forward, most of the shielding you're doing behind the lights. The shoebox is lighted facing down.
All right, so that shouldn't affect the homes?
We're going to bring you all the handheld, and see if that might make this a little bit easier. We've been having some issues with our sound system, and are waiting for an appointment with our vendor.
Sure. So, the variance request is for the height of the light. Currently, the city's limit is 15 feet, what we're requesting in terms of the variance request is for a 25-foot light. I don't believe there's any other requests being made in terms of those variants. But to give you more additional information on the lights, they're all facing down, and so the request has been from council to switch some of the lights, so they're facing towards the drive and away from the houses. And there are the ones along Chisholm Creek Parkway, there's one, two, three, and the request has been to switch the location of the lights.
Are there any light poles going in over here?
No, sir. There's Chisholm, yeah, across the street.
That's why we're saying move these three to the other side, that way.
Good, the lights are flat down, and then they're on a timer, they're on a dusk-to-dawn setting, photo cell setting, so they turn off on there.
And the reason we want to go up to 25 feet versus 15, with that, with remaining at 15 feet, be hinder truck traffic, the trucks are 14 feet or a little greater, or any equipment moving through there, is that why you want to move them up higher?
It's mainly to get the coverage for the lights, when they're shorter, you don't get enough coverage, it's to, in the nighttime, and also during the day, during the morning hours, early morning hours, to provide the lighting that's needed.
Any further discussion?
The school district is part of the, part of the city, so they'll work with the city.
I think the biggest thing they're looking for, sir, is that it not be a nuisance or pollute the homes that are in that area.
Sure.
And that's, I know that you all have worked with us very closely on a variety of things, and I don't have any doubt that Northwest would work with us on this as well. It's just, it's difficult to pinpoint exactly every variable as it relates to this, so that it's easily codified and easily understandable, but they've been very easy to work with, with the city, and they understands the concerns of those that live in that particular area. So, I don't doubt that they would be a willing partner in addressing anything that comes up after construction.
Did we have anybody in the neighborhoods that said, they got this public hearing notification? Did anyone reply to that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And just to give additional information, the school district also had a neighborhood meeting with the neighborhood, to talk about the project, to talk about the construction.
All of this has been reviewed by your city engineer, by your P&amp;Z, by your Public Works Director, et cetera, so...
What did P&amp;Z recommend?
They recommended approval.
I don't have any more questions specifically on lighting, but I do have a few more. I've had our neighbors come talk to me with some concerns.
Really, the only issue brought up from the council is just granting or denying a variance of a height. As I understand it, the city engineers, that they've already met all the requirements of our city.
Now, one of the questions that has been posed is, why do the lights need to be on all night? Is there a way to turn them off at 10:00 or midnight, or something to that effect? Because I know coming back from events, the children might be after 10 o'clock, but why do they need to be on the entirety of overnight?
I believe mainly for the security of the campus.
Okay. So that would be basically security issues, and do you all film things, and do you have, I'm assuming, security cameras on that campus?
Yes, they do.
That's one of the things that we may want to revisit at some point, so that's something that I would like to reserve as an option for council to discuss. If you make the variance, is it possible, or you allow that, is it possible, Carbon, to put that in with the times of the lights to be determined at a later discussion? Well, I think, at least the council member that is coming in through video, the biggest concern that they have heard is that it doesn't need to be on all nights, and that there are other campuses in the Northwest ISD School District that are not illuminated throughout the nighttime.
So is that an option?
I would have to discuss that with the Northwest ISD staff, to be able to answer that question.
How much traffic's on that road?
Chisholm Creek Parkway, or the loop road?
The part you're trying to eliminate.
That's mainly for apparent pickup and drop-off, what that means drives.
So for pickup and drop-off, so drop-off is not, or pickup is not dark? It's only dark of the morning, so you could do it from, like, 5 to 8, 5 to 7?
Can you guys give us just a second? We're going to try and make this where Councilmember King can be unmuted and speak on the questions that she has as well. Try it now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Christie, let me call you on the phone, that way we can maybe hear you.
Okay. Can you make it on my video? Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
I can't do both on the phone and the video, it's one or the other.
Okay, what questions do you have?
And I'm 10 minutes away. Well, to Mr. Johnson's question about how much traffic is on the road, that's kind of a double-edged question right now. There's not a great deal of traffic on the road, however, when school starts, and they're running 850 kids through there, and their families, they are, the intention, what we understood from the neighborhood meeting, is that the intention of, part of the plan is to remove the access for Prairie View Elementary onto 3433. So that means that all entry traffic will come down, what is that street? Chisholm Trail Parkway? In and out, there will, there will no longer be an ingress or an ingress for parents and families of 3433.
But if you're not picking kids up, or dropping them off, it shouldn't be lit up. That's what I'm getting at. It shouldn't be lit up for, you know, eight days.
Well, council, with your permission, we'd like to pause discussion on this until Christie gets here, she's almost here. We can move to the next, to the next item in the agenda, and when she gets here, we can go back to this, that way y'all can all talk together, is that okay?
Yeah, that's good.
All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, the council volunteered to perform monthly bank reconciliation review.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the tasks that we have had in place, or at least it's been in place since I've been here in Rome, and basically, we have a volunteer member that comes in, and they check the bank statements against the checks and the things that have been issued. Mrs. Priest handled this before, Mr. Schumak's been handling for us in the past, and with the advent of the new election, it's time to pick someone else, or someone, if Mr. Schumak wants to continue, who can handle that process for us. As we are realigning some of our duties within City Hall, I do expect us to get all this back on track and a little more streamlined, but it's open to discussion, who wants to perform this for us each month.
Does council, I have anybody in mind that would be willing to do this?
I know it's difficult sometimes for people to get in during the day when we're open, and that's generally the biggest challenge that we have. and that's generally the, the biggest challenge that we have.
I can contain some guys.
Is it not, is it a burden on you at all? Or would you rather have somebody else like bring it all, or, sorry, council member Loftus?
It kind of varies. Because lately, I've been working crazy hours, I guess, is the best way to put it. But that's about it. It's been kind of tough to get up there every month. I'm typically available during the day, so I should be able to find, sometime during the week, be provided.
So, it's not every week? It's once a month? But the question is, if Mr. Schumake wants to continue, that's fine. If Mr. Loftus or someone else wants to handle, however council chooses, we just bring this up each year after the election for someone to make the decision or for council to volunteer someone who handles that on behalf of the city. Now, your bank recs are also balanced by, at current, an outside consultant. They're also audited as part of all of the work that the pre-audit team does and that your outside auditor does. So, this is not, you're not the only person checking numbers. We have several safeguards for that.
It's not like a heavy lift for us.
Well, it takes time to schedule it and come in, but it's not, I'm not asking you to get into the computer and do the bank reconciliations.
So, what you're saying is you have a report already organized for us?
Correct. Yes.
I can certainly take that on once a month. But again, I'd like to, if it is, six months or a year or something like that, if I have an issue, I will speak up.
Do we have, we have to go to Mr. Loftus? All right. Next item on the agenda is Resilient Communities Program Award of Bid. I believe that's the update, the person updating our agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is an item that we applied for a grant through the, well, through our vendor with GrantWorks, they brought this to our attention. And we applied through the general land office for this Resilient Communities Program grant. And this would involve updating some of our zoning ordinances, our land use study and plan, and our comprehensive planning document. We had two different vendors bid for said process. One of them was GrantWorks, the, our current vendor, and one of them was the Antero Group. As, prior to the elections, excuse me, Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Loftus and I were going to meet to go through the rating criteria. We were not able to make that happen. So, Mr. Loftus and I are here to answer any questions, but Mr. Loftus can take the lead on this.
Yeah. Essentially, the materials we were provided to review were essentially a marketing boilerplate provided by the organizations, Antero, GrantWorks. And Antero is based out of Chicago, Illinois. We're in that area. Whereas GrantWorks is a Texas-based company. And since it's marketing material, obviously, it's, all looks very good. And then, when you go online and do searches for these individual companies, you get more of this. My, in my experience, if you're going to sign the contract with a company that's out of state, they'll typically have a section of the contract that describes that you enter into some sort of disagreement with these companies, that they will have the court proceedings in their home state. And based on the marketing materials provided at all of those, you know, the advantage that GrantWorks would have over Antero is that they are a Texas-based company. And if we had to enter into litigation somehow, it would be in our home state versus Illinois. And based on that, and that alone, is how I came to the conclusion that GrantWorks was the way to go. But that's my opinion. Everyone's welcome to that.
Is there any discussion left here?
It's overall, you're saying it's pretty much the same, but...
Yeah. Antero has other projects in North Texas. And, uh, like, and, uh, around North Texas. GrantWorks has, uh, projects throughout Texas.
Excuse me. There's also scoring criteria that we were given. And in going through this, Mr. Loftus and I discussed that Antero's presentation seems to be not as comprehensive as the one from GrantWorks. I, I'm not sure that Antero bid on everything that we had checked in our packet. And so, I don't know that their bid is complete. So, it would be my recommendation, as Mr. Loftus, to go with GrantWorks.
If there's no more discussion, does someone wish to make a motion to say GrantWorks should bid?
I'll make the motion that we go with GrantWork.
I'll second.
Motion in a second? Vote. Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
All right. Moving on to the next item, number four, the liquor election option mixed drinks update.
Thank you. Yes, sir. But if I could preface that before we get started, this was something that Mrs. Ty had brought forward a while back. And she had asked us to look into this as part of some of our due diligence, because we've had a couple of elections and we had some conflicting documentation. We do have someone who has come in and applied for a mixed beverage permit through TABC to create a potential tavern within town. And so, we had Carbon as our city attorney review those documents, and he has some information just to kind of clarify where we're at as a city.
Well, I just, I don't know. I just want to add to you, it's in your packet there, uh, the results of the Wise County election. The last one was held September eighth, two thousand and one, according to the records. And the city of Rome did vote to go with, for all purposes, uh, mixed beverages on and off premises.
So, this whole time, we've been assuming that we couldn't?
Yes. And that's one of the things when I was speaking to Mayor Crenshaw last week and then again yesterday, I will reach out to El Cezanne when I get back from the TCMA conference, and I will note this for them as well, because it was my understanding that they too would like to potentially sell mixed beverages on their property. I have notified the gentleman who applied, that kind of pushed this to the forefront and applied. Uh, we've signed his document, and he has sent it to the TABC to get a mixed beverage permit license. So, I'm assuming El Cezanne, if they choose, will follow that same path. But we wanted to update you all and get it into the record so that we all understood clearly where Rome was, because there was some confusion about the issue.
Then let's move to number five on the agenda. The acceptance of our vision, values, and mission statements.
Thank you, Mayor. You will recall when we met at the budget meeting, one of the items listed on that agenda for conversation was looking at the vision statement and the mission and value statements that I had found from previous councils and basically dusting those off and determining, were they still worded the way that the current council would like to see them worded? And if not, were there any changes that we needed to make to said vision, mission, and value statements for the community? I was very pleased, and I appreciate your work on that on a Friday afternoon, because we had kind of taken a deep dive into some of our numbers. And so, this was strategic for us. It was very important on behalf of the city of Rome. And so, if you don't mind, I'd like to at least read these out. You do have in your packet, I've put together some marketing materials that I think will help us get this messaging across. But let's start with the vision statement. One of the things that we talked about at our budget meeting was that a vision statement is meant to kind of set the goal for where you're going and what we would like to see us become in the future. Could be one year, five years, twenty years. It just depends. Um, but be, based on what we had in the past and based on what you all worked through, the vision statement that you have put forward is that Rome, an engaged community preserving a hometown feel where families and businesses thrive together. Is that still where we want to pursue for our vision statement for the city of Rome? Okay. Then, looking at the mission statement, we talked about what the organization is, who they serve, and what type of services it may provide. So, the mission statement would be Rome is an organization staffed by professionals working as a team to make Rome the best hometown in Texas. Then, moving to the value statements that we all put together, this is maybe not the final version of how it will lay out, but it is something that I, I think, kind of gets to the concept that we had with the, the wheel vision, that in the middle were the couple of values that we really wanted to focus on right now. And then, there would be supporting definitions or words or phrases that helped us to reach and achieve those particular values. And then, the two that you all worked on and put forward in conjunction with conversations with the staff is that one value would be building trust. The other one would be establishing pride within our community. Supporting those would be historical preservation, engaged community, harmony, communications, being innovative, being respectful, being fiscally responsible, transparent, approachable, having code enforcement, supportive interactions with our stakeholders, providing leadership, and hosting community events. Did I miss any? So, these are the items that are before you through this budget iteration and documentation process that are up for adoption or approval by city council this evening so that I can start using it on our website, on our agendas, and talking this through with staff and kind of further defining the vision and the direction that council has set.
Is there any discussion, council?
You said one and two. We all agreed. You said three. Still had some tweaking to do?
The, the one and two, building trust and establishing pride, are set. All of these on the outside that are basically either single words or a phrase, I would like to put some definition to it. What, what do we mean by being innovative? What do we mean by being respectful? So, I thought I would take the values, and I will work through that with staff, and we will bring you all short, fairly easy-to-understand definitions so that we can use these. And this will be a guiding factor in all of our interactions, not just with council, but with our stakeholders in the community, with each other, as we build our team and as we provide services. So, that's the general direction that I would suggest that council take with the value statements.
I think this is a living doc. As we adopt these, or if we just choose to adopt this resolution, we, it's not that we can't change it, add or delete. As we evolve, this will evolve. No further discussion? We have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make the motion, council. To adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Let's vote. Place one.
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four?
Aye.
Five. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
The next on the list would be the appointment of a mayor of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one applicant for the Planning and Zoning Commission that has put in their information for us, Mr. Jeremy Finch. He is also here this evening. If you all have any questions or would like to hear anything about his background, we do need members on planning and zoning, and I do think that his particular expertise will be helpful on behalf of the city of Rome. So, Mr. Finch, would you mind coming to the mic and just giving a quick overview?
Good evening. Um, yeah, so, I've been working in the municipality, working for twenty-five years. You guys, many of you, water guy. I have a associate degree in GIS. I used to do it in college. I'm very familiar with various, plots, plaques. I do a lot of work. I have to look up plaque blocks, especially by the, by, I have to, get, kind of, I interviewed a long time ago, a parent, personal, personal, family, field. Found out that was... Um, the degree's good, and that's where I really learned about plaques. Bearing, uh, all the time, you know, back in the, right now, in the, in the water. The development over in Harvus, with the, well, city, and that, that, stuff, and, uh, stuff, water line, and stuff, water, and, uh, right, uh, so, definitely, uh, so.
Do I have any questions? Go to the candidates.
No questions, but I can say that I know Mr. Finch to be passionate about, um, working and serving the community. He is knowledgeable as far as public works and planning and zoning processes, and he has a willingness to serve.
I think he'll be a great addition. I mean, he was a, he was a help during the bond issues, getting knowledge out there. And so, I think that he'll be, he'll be a great addition to it.
There's no more discussion from council. Let's move to a vote. Do I have a motion to accept his nomination with P&amp;Z?
I have a motion that we accept Jeremy Finch into the P&amp;Z committee.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second? Place one.
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Motion carries. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, and welcome aboard.
At this time, I'd like to move back to, uh, the variance request from Northwest ISD now that we have councilmember King here, uh, so that we can move forward with this.
Do you like to go back to the microphone?
And for those people at home, everyone on council needs to get really friendly with their microphone. It is very challenging to hear unless we're speaking directly into the mic.
So, as we've talked before, these are directional. And unfortunately, you have to get close to them, but they also pick up ancillary noise from the standpoint of when you are sitting at your desk. So, if you're not using mute, but if you are, then be right on your microphone, please, because we do have, we've had some issues with the system. We've had some issues with feedback amongst the speakers. We've reached out to the vendor, but we don't have an appointment with them as of yet.
Is any part of his presentation map, anything part of the request in our packet?
No, ma'am. The map that he has is the only copy that was in the packet itself, um, but he's happy to bring it over and let council take a look at it.
Just a reminder, the only thing that's actually on the agenda tonight is height, not location, actually not wattage or anything like that. The city engineers already determined they've met the requirements of our ordinance. But the only issue is they're asking to go higher than what our ordinance allows. So, that's really what the focus of the council is.
I guess my only question, can we bring this back as far as the timing goes? Or how do we get back to that?
You can condition the granting of the variance. Some condition, if you want to condition it, but if they're in compliance with the ordinance, not a lot, we'd have to change the ordinance.
Let's do, bring that back. We'll change the ordinance.
Now, which ordinance are we speaking of? The one, but we've already approved that, so I don't know how we can do that.
They're vested right now.
Yeah.
Whatever they have, I mean, he's, he's indicated, the engineers indicated, they're down-facing lights, they meet the requirements of our ordinance. The only issue really is, if you raise them, obviously, the apron is created by the light is bigger. So, the question is, is it going to be flooding into neighboring properties? It's going to be off of their site.
And so, I think, just support them at the plant, sideline, those, the lines, that those all meetings.
And just remember that these lights that they're wanting to put in, as I understand it, will be the same as all the lighting that's already there.
Just closer to the, the humps.
Correct. And I'm sorry, the lighting that is there does not run dusted on. It does not. There are some lights... There are some lights that are at the entryways to the building, at the parking lot, lighting does not run dusted on.
Okay. I, I can inform the district about it.
That's one thing. And the other thing is, most of the new campuses have, do have light that is operable dusted till dawn, but it operates on a motion-detected basis. So that would be another thought that I have.
But that would have to be something separate then tonight, because we can't do...
Yes, I understand.
And if, the only thing we can discuss now is the height, and that's what the variance request is.
Regarding height, I know just thinking around Rome and around my neighborhood in Old Town, I'm pretty sure all those lights are higher than 15 feet.
Yes, and to, and to answer that comment, most lights that we do with school districts of commercial development, it's usually about 24, 25 feet high. It's unusual to see a city that has a 15-foot height restriction on light bulbs. The existing lights on campus are also 25 foot.
The, that we come back and lay our date to readdress the ordinance itself, and make, and go through the ordinance, get things the way everybody wants them, it's likely to be the same. So, right now, it's just about the height.
Well, I think that's the concern, is that, just like we do with signage, once it's done, we have to live with it.
So if we say no to the height, and then we make the other adjustment to give the approval? I'm sure I followed your question. Okay, you're...
I think he said, if we, if we deny the variance request, and make all the other changes, and then come back with the privilege. They've already met the, they've met the requirements of the ordinance that we have passed.
I believe our ordinance, and I'll have to double-check my memory, but I believe we have a one-year waiting period before you can come back if a variance is tied, before you can come back seeking a variance on the same issue.
That goes back to this key, was we give the approval, then we're stuck with it.
Look, if, if you give the approval for the variance, then yes, they would be entitled to build the lights. They're in compliance with the ordinance at that point.
I feel like, is this something that the neighborhood can have a discussion with y'all after the fact? I mean, I feel like we don't, we, we don't have anything to, to do other than accept the lights or not accept the lights.
Yeah, to Jimmy's point, Jimmy said, we already have, yes, there was a community meeting that was held, to my knowledge, I was there, KP, you weren't there, Stephanie was there, but I do not recall that during the time that I was there, that the lighting was...
And I think to Carvin's point, if you deny the variance, it'll be a year before, if, if he's recalling our ordinances correctly, it will be a year before they could come back and review this topic again, and I know that they are hoping to have this school opened fairly soon. Can you refresh their memories to when the opening?
Yeah, school's open in summer of next year.
Yeah.
So it's more than a year away, so, and they're not using this parking lot now, right? So...
Right, it's not constructed.
I think there might be another option where we neither deny it nor approve it, and ask them to come back with additional information. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, that's essentially tabling it, and if the applicants agree with allowing to come back with additional rights.
Sure. And to give you more information, they were supposed to be... So, um, based on the district information, the lights are on from 5:30 a.m. to 8 a.m., and then from 6:45 to 10 p.m. The night, uh, the night schedule has to override that overrides it.
Oh, so that changes things, huh?
Sorry, come in talking, when you come in talking dusted on, you're talking very different language than what they've communicated.
Sure, and that's why I was trying to...
So I, I do agree with the idea of tabling until school district staff could be present, and they could answer some more of our questions.
I move we table this topic till our next meeting, or when these Northwest ISD personnel can be available.
Now, let's see, they are very appealing to work with what we're thinking outside height, so can we bring this back with more extension than just the variance?
Well, I think that our ordinances have already said that they can, they've, they've already, I guess, I don't even know.
They've met the requirements of the ordinance.
Exactly.
Well, let's just give us more time.
We have a motion on the table.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. We have a vote. Place one.
If we are going to do this, please, can we continue to a date certain, so I don't have to republish? So I don't know if that's...
Are we going to table this to our next meeting?
Which is June 27.
That's what the motion was for.
At 6 p.m.
Give it the date.
Can I clarify something? Sorry. So we're tabling the motion in terms of the height?
We are tabling discussion and vote on this variance request until our next meeting.
And yes, the height is still the question.
So...
All other items have been met.
They'd like the school district representatives to be on site.
All right, we have a motion in second. Have to have a vote. Place one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three. Four.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is tabled until our next meeting.
On June 27, Thursday at 6 p.m., two weeks from today.
Moving on to our, our last agenda item on the regular agenda, members for the bond committee, Mr. Councilmember Loftus, I think that's yours.
Yes, uh, I haven't heard a lot of information on this from other folks, so I'm assuming, has everyone canvassed their citizens, they know, ask them if they can be on the bond committee? Do we want to have them fill out an application similar to planning and zoning application? That's a generic committee application.
I think he's in favor of that, I think that's why.
So, does everyone have that application available to them? Do we have a blank?
I can email you a blank one.
And then, I know I've contacted a couple of people, haven't received a full response yet, so again, this is something that we need to move out. Or, or, that everyone has personally.
Would it be acceptable to count that if by our next meeting, if we table this to the next meeting, if we have no applicants for this bond committee, if we're going to have to... We either need to do something with it, or take, or do away with it. We already have external review of companies, we have auditors, we have, there's a lot of, we have a lot of people watching our books already, so if we can't get enough volunteers to do, that really want to do this, we either need to shut it down, or do something with it by our next meeting.
Well, I think that we need to let the people know that, that it's open. I mean, I don't think that they are aware as of yet, and I know that we've been busy, so if there's something that we could forward out from the city to say, hey, on social media, whatever, like, we're, we've got a bond committee coming up.
I can certainly do that, but I would ask for more time than two weeks.
Yeah. Yes.
We move it to our next first meeting in July?
On, on the 11th, that would be...
The 11th, July.
Yeah, we have, we have time on this, I mean, we haven't even committed to the first bond yet, so.
I did... I, I would ask if we could make a decision about how often the bond advisory committee, and I think that's important, that we keep in there that it is an advisory committee, not an oversight committee. So I agree with Mayor Crenshaw, that there's plenty of oversight. So what we need are some advisors and some people that can get some input and share with the community what's happening in regards to the bond.
So the advisory committee is in the bylaws, that is clearly denoted. I was looking to see if we had put any specific meetings. It actually says the committee shall meet monthly, and I'm not sure that monthly is a necessity.
Yeah, I think we had discussion about quarterly meetings at one time.
I think quarterly is much more doable.
I'm afraid it's not used as a late point of the year, or as needed.
That's a, that's a good one, too.
Well, I think when you're trying to get volunteers, that that clarity matters.
Any further discussion?
So out of this, we are going to each receive a PDF of the form, we're going to have some sort of announcement in social media about the availability of decisions on the committee, clarification on how often it will be.
That's what I understand.
Just wanted to clarify.
Any further discussion? Not what we want, I don't think we have any further discussion.
That is correct, sir.
Is, are there any future agendas that council would like to add for the next meeting? I would, I would like to add a clarification for an establishment of city policy on the use of city property.
Do you have a timeframe where you're looking for something, or would you like me to just put it on the agenda and allow you to frame that first?
Let's do that. I would like to come in and have some discussion about it, and then we can...
I will put that on the 27th.
Anybody else got anything for the agenda? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Place one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, this meeting is adjourned at 7:02 p.m.
Thank you all.